Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Webster Annual Organizational Meeting, also regular Board Meeting on July 11, 2023. And if you would stand with me, please, for the pledge, Jerry would you lead it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation, by God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much. If you see them. First thing this evening is we have our annual meeting, organizational meeting. And we will go through this. We'll go through this by groups, I think, as the headings indicate, so that we're not taking individual votes necessarily on any part of those except if they are needed. And we certainly may bring up any objection that may happen. So first of all, would be the mayor appointment not subject to board approval. And that would be an appointment by myself, Jerry Alito Jr., as deputy mayor, to act as mayor when I cannot fulfill the duties by not being here. Next, we begin here with board designations. And first is Candidate for National Bank being designated as official bank of the Village of Webster. And secondly, to designate the Webster Herald as the official newspaper of the Village of Webster.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Oh, you went in on all in favor last year. I'm sorry. You don't have to do the full call.
All in favor.
We'll just do all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
That's a group. Natural Mayor's Appointment Subject to Approval of the Board. And first would be to the reappointment of Heather Holstad as village clerk, term ending July 1, 2025. Secondly, appointment of Danielle Kruger as village treasurer, for a term ending July 1, 2025. Third, we have the reappointment of Joe O'Neal as deputy village clerk and deputy village treasurer, term ending July 1, 2024. Next, we have the reappointment of Don White as village and zoning board of appeals attorney, term ending July 1, 2024, and authorization for me to sign the retainer agreement with Mr. White. And last, we have the reappointment of Mark Nicholson as chairperson of the zoning board of appeals, and a term ending July 1, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Historic Preservation Commission and historian. First of all, the reappointment of Peter Aldrich, Chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission, with a term ending July 1, 2024. We have next the reappointment of Lynn Barton as village historian for a term ending July 1, 2024. And then we have to the commission itself, the reappointment of Peter Aldrich, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, for a term ending July 1, 2028. We have the reappointment of Lynn Barton as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending July 1, 2029. The appointment of Josh Durso as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending July 1, 2025. The appointment of Marie Duar as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending July 1, 2026. And the appointment of Michael Vallone as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending July 1, 2027.
Mayor, I just have a quick question. So for, to reappoint Lynn Barton, for just as the commission role as a member, she technically was already good until 2026, but with the new members, they wanted to stagger them. So she's still technically good until 2026. So I just, I don't know if you want to leave it that way or, because obviously 2029 is up to you guys. But she's still good until 2026.
She is?
Yes.
However, there's no one else going until 2029? I would leave that in.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Different page.
Pardon? Because we staggered.
So they're not all up at once?
Well, you got 2029, which was 28, and 2025, 20 to 2029. This would be page two, top?
Yep.
And Maria Duar, 25. But mine say 20, probably doesn't matter. Mine say 2026, 2025, 2029. They're all off except for Michael Vallone.
No, that's correct, what you just said.
You did something different than I did.
On that page, do you have the first Lynn at 2029?
Yes.
And Josh at 2025?
Yes. I wonder why.
That's what I just read. And Maria at 2026. And Michael Vallone at 2027.
They're just coming out. I don't know, Peter, why do they all look like they're different?
They have to be.
Staggered.
The way the local law is in the village code, the terms are staggered.
You can't have them all the same year.
Okay. Definitely change. But I didn't mean that.
So the one who is shortest of 2025, Josh Durso.
I don't have, I don't have the local on from you, but does it allow for six-year terms?
That's, yeah, I think, I think that's right. I was gonna, I didn't get a chance to check the actual length of the term. Did you guys?
Yeah, I looked at 2020.
Okay, so.
Lynn Barton to a six-year term.
All right, so that's good. As long as they're, as long as they have six-year terms and they're staggered, it's good.
Okay.
And those who are new, like Josh, or Maria, or Michael, do not necessarily have to serve.
Nope.
For us, a six-year term.
Correct.
But if they're reappointed, it would be for an additional six.
Exactly. Exactly.
It's like starting all over again, basically, because the commission was down so many people.
Yes. I don't know how like the next day would have been on 2020.
I'll give a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have the Parks and Recreation Committee. And we have here the reappointment of Peter Aldrich to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term ending July 1, 2024. And the reappointment of Missy Rosenberry to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term ending July 1, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the Business Improvement District. And this is for the appointment of Mayor Byers, Trustee Lancy, and Bill Horr to the Business Improvement District Board of Directors for a term ending July 1, 2024.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We could have done that same thing for the next committee.
We could have.
But everybody in one group needs to.
We will. For the Ethics Committee, we have a motion here or we have, yes, to reappoint Trustee Alito, village board member to the Ethics Committee, term ending July 1, 2024. The reappointment of Joe O'Neal to the same committee. And also, a new appointment of Bill Horr, village resident to the Ethics Committee, for a term ending July 1, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A general office. We have a motion to set the mileage for authorized village employees traveling with their private vehicle to be 65.5 cents per mile. And I hope that as many as possible will use the village vehicle for authorized travel. At any rate, to me, 62.5 cents this year is 65.5.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, next, we have a motion for village office hours. They shall be Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The village office will be closed on Sunday and Saturday. The office will be closed for all governmental holidays, including. And we have a list of those New Year's, Martin, who became president, Good Friday Memorial 13th, Independence Day and the day after, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day and the day after, as well as Christmas Day.
Why don't we work a half-day on Fridays?
We don't. We just lock the office at 11:00 so that we can get stuff done without having to ask for a shift. Our hours are still the same, just the office hours sort of change. Well, this is how it was last year.
Pennsylvania, Ben, I think you're the last. Three years. Well, one thing we see in those days, and village office hours.
Nobody might check for this.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? The following Village of Webster policies are adopted as written in these sections of the policy manual and employee handbook shall be effective until July 1, 2024. They are the procurement policy, section 5.2, and the organizational chart, section 6.1. Things to do with not seeing the organization chart, which was included with this organizational information. And a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Village meetings. The village meetings are to be conducted according to section 2.2 of the policy manual. Regular village board meetings will be the second and fourth Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Meetings of the zoning board of appeals on the third Tuesday of each month at 7:00. Note that it's a change. Village board workshop meetings will be on the first or last Tuesday of every, of the month at 6:00 p.m., but only as needed. In the event that a village board meeting is moved to a Tuesday, the meeting will start at 6:00 p.m., as it is today. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a change in the following meeting dates. Village board workshop meetings, February 6, 2024, meeting is moved to January 30, 2024. I believe that would be the workshop. May 7, 2024, moved to April 30, 2024, and August 6, 2024, moved to July 30, 2024. And the following meeting dates for the village board, July 11, 2024, moved to July 9, 2024, in anticipation of the carnival, again next July. And November 28, 2024, moved to November 26, 2024, for Thanksgiving Day.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have next the motion for the following liaison assignments that are in place until the village board organizational meeting on July 9, 2024. And they are the same as they were for last year. I will not go down through them all. Some of you who have been on the board for a number of years know what they are, so I would ask for a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Sorry.
Motion carries. Okay. Our next organizational meeting is set for Tuesday, July 9, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., prior to the regularly scheduled village board meeting. And I have a motion to approve the next organizational meeting.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes the organizational meeting for Tuesday.
Good job.
Seventy-four minutes.
It's a public conversation, so we get a decent time to treat ourselves. Just.
With the organizational part of the legal debate, we will move now to regular board business. And first of all, I would like to invite anyone who would be interested, as part of our audience, to come up to the microphone if you wish to address the board in any comment. Get your name. Good evening, sir.
Hi. Peter Aldrich, 59 Dunham Avenue. First, I just want to thank the board for fully appointing the Historic Preservation Commission. We've been in a little bit of limbo trying to, trying to get ourselves reorganized. And it was very helpful, the office staff and Heather, were extremely helpful in getting information out through the Town Times and on the village's website, and that's how we got our members. So looking very much forward to having three new people to energize the group and bring some new ideas. So I think it's going to be a great, great thing. They're all very excited about it. Many of them wanted to come tonight, but we kind of didn't know which meeting was going to be appointment on, so their schedules got a little bit difficult. We are doing exactly the same effort for the Parks Committee, though. So I wanted to, and Heather posted up some things on the website there as well. But I do want everybody to know, we are looking for members for the Village Parks Committee. I have been trying to work really hard, like I do with the HBC, on getting some infrastructure. We have a new Gmail address, which is BWPRC, Village Webster Parks and Recreation Committee, at gmail.com. If you need to contact the Parks and Rec group, if you're interested in joining, that's a great way to. You email me, I monitor that, and I can get back to you. Also, I put together a Google site, because they're free, so that's how I, I cheat. So anyways, but it also has on there all the, all the parks on there. I was able to put all the narratives of the parks. Eventually, I'm going to put some history of the parks, but also shows people when they get to that site, where the parks are. It actually has a mapping application to it, so you can actually see where it is if you're trying to come from someplace else and get to, say, Wilmerite Park, if you want to see what the playground looks like. That is at, it's at sites.google.com/ViewWebsterVillageParks. So if you want to see more information about village parks, I would encourage you to go there. Many people don't know, but the Village of Webster is blessed with parkland. It's been, it's been one of those traditions of village boards since 1905, that they have just seen fit to preserve land in the village for parks for village residents. And if you look at the per capita actual local village parkland, we have the most of any village in the county. Some villages have actually more parkland because they have, like, Black Creek Park, but that's a county park. So I'm not going to have that count. I'm going to have only our local efforts count, and that's, that puts us squarely in number one for looking at parkland for our village. And just before I leave this subject completely, we have six great parks in the village. There's Veterans Memorial Park, which is sort of the one everybody knows. We have Harmony Park on Phyllis Road, where the village band is playing. And I know the schedule for their concerts is on the village website, and they have, I think, two or three concerts left. They play on Thursday nights. Wilmerite Park, which is tucked in near into the Wilmerite tract off of South Avenue. Shands Park, which is real popular, it's off of Holly Drive. And State Road, it's kind of sandwiched between them. Mill Case Park, which is our passive recreation park, it's a little wild, it's up here, right next to Spry, and it's a great park to walk in if you like nature. And then we have a little pocket park on North Avenue, that you see when you come off the expressway, there's got a beautiful gazebo and great job with the lights there. And the flowers are beautiful, by the way, and that's another great one if you just want to sit and rest, if you're coming off of the bike trail, or even if you're coming up from the OJAC Trail. So just a really good effort by the village over the years to try to preserve parkland for our residents. So taking that hat off, they have a lot of them. I just want to make sure that everybody realizes the bid is also doing a lot of events during the summer. So there are concerts coming up on Fridays, the 21st of July, the 28th of July, August 4th. There are family game nights throughout the summer, so check that schedule. The Jazz Fest is on the 19th of August, so look forward to that. The 18th is Jazz in the Pubs. And then sometime in September, I'm not sure about the date exactly, it might be the 16th, but not sure. There's going, they're bringing back the Bed Race. You guys remember the Bed Race?
Yes.
Yeah? Yeah, I remember, like, getting completely winded doing it. Jake, did you ever do that with me? No? Okay, I don't know. I can't remember. Some people did it with me, okay. And then there's Beer Walk in October, the Trigger Tree Trail is the 28th. And then there will be, of course, White Christmas in the village in December. So there's a lot going on in the village for you this, this summer, so I encourage people to come out and enjoy themselves, especially with concerts coming up and Jazz Fest. But again, thank you so much for what you did tonight, making sure HBC is a fully functional board, so, all right, thanks.
Peter, what I would ask is, possibly if they're willing to do it, I would like to recognize them and put them in front of the camera.
Yeah.
For the village to see, so if those, the three new appointees of the Historic Commission would like to come next meeting.
Okay. I'll absolutely invite them.
It'd be wonderful to have them.
Okay.
Come and the Parks and Rec looking for people, so I would encourage anyone that is interested to put their name in the hat. And also, I would like to say, nice front porch.
Oh, thank you.
Nice addition to the village, having another house with a front porch.
Yes. So those people are watching from Oregon, probably have no idea what that means, but our house was built in 1890, and sometime early in the 20th century, they took the porch off. And that was one of the things that my wife and I could agree on easily, which is, we need to restore it and put the porch back on. So now it has something that looks similar, probably, to what was on there when it was first built, so.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
I feel what, we'll do that. We're having, we're actually had two parties so far. We're, we're with it, so.
Next meeting, next meeting from your bed.
Yeah, that'd be great. This Facebook Live from the porch, that'd be good. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't think there is anyone else who would like to address the board. So I will at this time close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will turn now to village business. First, we have a resolution to approve a minute from June 12, 2023. It's here on the bottom page of the packet.
Oh, sorry, I don't know how they got out of order.
Or is the July 22nd?
Not done.
We have a special business meeting. We do the claims and warrants, and I believe we added it. Are you, Chairman Jackwood, to, to the front porch? I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alber?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Lancy? Oh, sorry. Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to go through these, and I only had, actually, two questions. They were in the abstracts for the Seward, and I had both of those questions answered by John, gave me a phone call, which I truly appreciate. The question was on bills that were dated 2022. They were, I believe, fulfilled in 2023, so actually, we take them to actually, 2023 budget. Correct?
Waiting for almost admitting motion?
I'm giving opportunity to look through them, and if you have them satisfied, then I will take a motion to approve.
You should wait on us.
No. You have an opportunity to look.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Now, second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Alber?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last, we have a resolution to authorize the purchase of a new six-wheel dump truck from Conway Bean Truck Company off of the Anandaga County bid contract with number 8996 as described in proposal dated 3/3/2023, to include Henderson Products package described in the quote, number 172166, and the amount of $290,070.49, and further authorizing Superintendent Public Works to sign any documents necessary to facilitate the transaction. This six-wheel dump truck, Jake, would replace which?
Ideally, it was going to replace 10, the Sterling, but some of the 750, we have two 750s, and we tried to get a smaller, moderately sized truck. And we're contemplating maybe sending one of the 750s, the older one of the 750s, we already have 750s, and keeping the Sterling for a mother and few years until the next replacement cycle. It's, they're, I think they were a good idea. It's, they're, I think they were a good idea. They don't scrape snow very well because of the front end's light and the floor's very light, so we needed to scrape snow. Normally plowing, they do fine. When we go to clean up, the bigger truck works better, and we have one of those, so it'll almost be nice to add two of the bigger trucks and one of the smaller ones. So that's, even though it's kind of aligned with the plan, I think functionally it'll be a better, but we'll have about a year, we'll probably a year, 14 months, 14, 15 months before this truck's out, so hopefully the decision's not made for us at that time. I can't imagine you're going to know, but yeah, this won't be a little bit before we get in here.
Well, if that will come with plow, what do you have?
Yeah, no, that's what the Henderson is.
That's the Henderson package.
Yep, the plow, ring the body, the solder, and all that.
Any other questions that anyone on the board has for Jake regarding this item? Now, I would ask for a motion to approve authorization.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Alina.
Aye.
Mayor Byss.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, at this time, I would turn this over to attorney. Don, do you have anything for us?
No, other than I noticed on the organizational chart, there's still a planning board there. Get it exiled the planning board.
Yeah.
Take out, because it's now just the zoning board.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, this whole organizational chart, it is a little fix-it-up.
Now, Tom, do you like to meet in tune?
Otherwise, I don't have anything. Jake and I are working on the building code and energy code enforcement law that the state of New York is requiring. Hopefully, maybe we'll get it to you by the next meeting. It's like 50 some odd pages of thrilling reading. If any of you are having trouble sleeping, knock your head out. All right, it's a big, it's a big change. Well, it's just redoing two chapters of the current code to kind of update. So everything is code enforcement officer, not so much building inspector.
I'm still going through the book on the sewer, and the sewer changes. I got that a little while ago, but still working on it. Maybe I shouldn't be reading every page.
Yeah, so I don't think they should have been boxed, we don't control them, there shouldn't be a line.
I said that, I don't think it should be.
Yeah. Because that's what those lines mean, is that people, all these people are on the same level, so the attorney and the superintendent of public work, they're of the same level as the Parks and Rec and band, I don't think so either. So there needs to be higher deals or charges for those kind of off.
Could the other boards move over here to where these are?
And you technically really wanted to, you go to have the mayor, then the trustees, instead of having us all in one box to show it. I mean, it says village trustees and the mayor.
I know, I know.
Like we just throw them in there.
Don, did you hear the first part? I had said this before, but does the business improvement district even need to be on there? Because we're, they're not, we don't govern anything, we just have a liaison on it.
Right, it's a line to the board being to the response.
Oh, that shouldn't be there either.
And then move the other boards to under Historic Preservation Commission, but I don't even.
I think I would just put the bid like underneath the Historic Preservation Commission. You helped fund the bid, you know, they tell you how much to collect in taxes, so to that extent, they report to the village board, but.
And then, I don't, Peter, do we still have a board for seniors and disabled?
I don't think it's ever been repealed, but it's not, I think it's kind of defunct.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, but the board never repealed it, so.
The seniors and disabled under other boards, it doesn't mean.
It couldn't.
But if it's, if it technically is still, you know, if it's still existence, you could fill it out if you wanted to, so you're pretty.
Also, I don't know if that word is PC anymore, but.
Whatever the local law says that it established, that's what you call it.
I have it.
Amendment to local law.
So we have the senior bus program, which falls under, would that include seniors and disabled to a new?
That's law.
No, it is law.
Yeah, we, the village funds it, but it's not a village organization. It's actually an after-profit.
Right.
Yeah, because when I had seniors and disabled, we did a lot of things with sidewalks, remember a lot of things.
Won't you have the after-workshops for this? And see if you want to discuss that.
Yeah, enough, yeah. And then it just needs to be, like, there's some bold box lines, and there's some not, and there's lines that are, you know, not straight and friggin', so it's just, it looks like something I kind of done, so I'll speculate a little better.
How about the historian?
Yeah.
Well, the historian's an appointed position.
The last one.
It's an appointed position by the village board, so the historian reports directly to the village board.
I think it could just drop down to the.
I don't know why you have the treasurer reporting to the village clerk, where treasurer is a separate officer, just like the village clerk is under village law.
Well, we changed that to the last one. Two, two.
Yeah, that was a couple before. The question is, I think, I think maybe the board should reconsider whether it's so honest to do that.
But then you've got an errand situation, or a building inspection position, where it's like somebody that doesn't have a base seat to the mayor, but I think it's okay the way it is personally.
Okay.
You want to give, you've got the village, the village mayor.
Of course, you can say, I think it's okay, but she requires me to. But looking at this right now, well, who's the deputy treasurer?
Joe.
Right.
Exactly.
So in the absence of a treasurer, you wouldn't even act as the treasurer?
Technically, this was supposed to be me, but I let her have it, but she was retired.
Okay.
It just, it makes, it caused a lot of problems when it was let back initially.
Well, I think that was because of the particular person that was in the office.
Exactly, exactly.
And then, so now you've got a different person.
We need to have an exec session of the motion.
I'm just suggesting that after Danielle gets some time in, you might want to.
I agree.
Right, and maybe time, because of saying, to Heather's point.
Heather keeps shaking her head, but that's the village law. Village law is the treasurer is co-equal to the clerk.
Right, but if it was, if it is village law, which I believe you, then this should have never been able to pass, we should have been advised against it at that moment because we did.
There were some extenuating circumstances when it changed.
Right, and, and we, and so the treasurer, if reports to the mayor, and she has treasurer questions or issues, he's got to help resolve them. He doesn't have any of that background report, that's the problem, similar to Aaron reporting directly to the mayor.
And now she comes to me because I know more than her in certain areas, because I think they're just flexes.
But if it's truly not supposed to be that way, it's got to go back.
Right.
But I didn't, I didn't understand it to be that way last time we made this decision.
I don't think technically, there, the village officers are, you know, are the mayor, the clerk, and the treasurer. You can have internally, you know, if you want the treasurer to report to the clerk, that's supposed to be, because some villages have clerk slash treasurer.
Yeah. And it worked really well, we got Marcia, it worked really well with her, and that's just, then, right, you run that risk where Daryl, you know, he's part of time, he doesn't know treasurer stuff, so.
Well, I don't really respond.
Maybe you should spend more time.
Fair point.
Brad doesn't know Jake, oh, Jake's not here.
Well, now I'm going to send you to clerk school.
But I guess if by law it's supposed to be that way, then we have to go back, so can you do further investigation, or do you know?
Well, I couldn't. I think, I think the internal reporting is probably case by case, really by village. Just have to have, if you don't have a clerk slash treasurer, you got to have a treasurer and a clerk, which you do.
Yes.
Who the treasurer reports to is probably up to the individual village.
Okay.
You could have the treasurer report to Jake if you mind.
The old lady here.
Jake would like that, so you could probably.
I think he's got enough gas to.
Well, that's nothing.
Okay. Anything in the courts office that you are aware of that this is a point?
It's busy.
Okay. Jake?
We were doing a rough turn up this week with the parade and everything else going on, but the one, it's happy news, I didn't hear it mentioned, but the town, I understand that their board meeting last week, the OPIMA's for the sewer, the Alphabell Bike and the general one, so I talked to Rick down at the sewer department today on different matter, and I asked him about it, and he said, oh, yeah, they sent it to DEC and all that, so.
Great.
I thought we were going to send it to ours.
Yeah, it should have been.
Across the board.
Yeah. Oh, by the way.
Did it stop there? I don't have anything to say.
I thought you said by the way.
Nice job today, Jake.
Who's this guy?
Anything else, Jake?
The assaults.
I thought you'd put a plug in for the.
Carnival. Yes, the Carnival's going on. So everybody confuses for four days, so.
It's a lot different, see, the ticket booth and all that stuff, clams, right?
Yeah, yeah, they had a pretty big band on Friday night planned for.
Zac Brown?
Zac Brown tribute band, I guess, they're pretty big, so they rearranged the beer tent some and made it, we've talked for years about trying to get food, keep the beer tent together, and the first step or the first drive, that is moving the clam booth there.
Yeah.
Moving some walls over, making it work, so pretty see that, and it'll be pretty interesting, but hopefully the weather holds up, doesn't look.
It looks like we're going to have a little rain.
On Thursday, Friday.
Yeah.
The band's on Friday, right?
Yeah, they keep changing, I mean, it starts tomorrow night, Wednesday, and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then it's all day Saturday, and then the Saturday night with the.
The parade looks like sixty, seventy percent from like three o'clock to eight o'clock.
Yeah, just during the parade, that's what it's, they're calling for it.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting, but yeah, no, it's fun.
I don't ever remember it being canceled.
Did it ever been canceled? Not that I can remember.
Carnival must go on.
The parade, I don't know.
Yeah, we had a couple, yeah, we had a couple years with that COVID, but we didn't have to.
Because of what the.
Yeah, yeah.
Daryl, this is Maria.
Hi.
She did come. We originally thought it was at seven, so that's why we didn't know the six thing first. When we, when we talked, she, she thought it was seven. So anyway, she, so she is here.
Maria's here. Well.
Well, welcome.
This is Maria Duar. Is that right, Duar?
Duar, like whiskey.
Duar, like whiskey.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Good to have a larger board.
Finally.
So yes, we appointed you, we did not reappoint Peter yet, but.
If you were not aware, your appointment is through 2026.
Okay.
At that point, if you're still interested, I'm sure you will. Reappointed. Welcome. Do you have with you?
My daughter, Kelsey.
Your daughter? You heard her? How old do you have to be to hold daughters? Eighteen, twenty-one?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
For a village.
She's only fifteen, so she's got a few years.
Didn't they have that twelve-year-old, Ron, against?
What?
He's pretty young, kind of kid.
Oh.
They're Johnny, right, against.
He was in college, right?
I don't know, I think he was still in high school.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, our next village board meeting will be July 27 at 7:00 PM, and there is a possible chance that it may really not be canceled. I have a note here that says question of cancel, depends on the number of items, I guess, that we have on the agenda, but I think that we probably will have to do so. Contemporously, it is going to be July 27. All right, well, does anything else? If not, then I would, at this point, make a motion to adjourn is seven, six, six fifty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second hit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Vote for Gary. We'll see you in two weeks, two weeks and two days. Good evening.